Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Vice Chair Otto So, you have three members present. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Then I'm online and see honorable Amber Kenneth, honorable Amber Kenneth Bakrati on the line also. You can we'll be on the line with that. We went ahead and used Chairman's authority to go into recess for one hour to so that Office of Legislative Council can work on some amendments and I believe the amendments are sent out to us. So with that, we will be. Give my phone on mute or take live here. But with that, we were in the midst of entertaining amendment number one. And we are still at amendment number one with a motion made by Honorable Eugene So. And the second emotion was made by Vince James and we went into a recess that time. So with that, I'm going to go back to our legislative staff to reassure that we do have that the documents were emailed out to the committee members. Lorene?
Yes, Vice Chair. The amendment was sent out by Mr. Cook. So there's only one amendment that needs to be made. The all the exhibits A through E are in place. And the amendment that needs to be made is on page two, line 22. At section four as follows. Section four, recommending to the Budget Finance Committee carryovers for Department of Justice. The Law and Order Committee recommends to carry over of unextended balances from novellation fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022 as follows. The Department of Justice unextended balances business units 104001, 14002, and 104005. That's the amendment that will be made. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair.
Awesome. Thank you very much for reading the amendment into the record. With that, as I said, we have a motion in place and second in place for amendment number one. And with that, committee members, is there any questions to the amendment number one?
Vice Chair, this is Delegate Charles Newton. I've got a question really quickly.
Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just for clarification, I thought before we went into recess that the amendment was pertaining to the exhibit. Based on the email that we just now received, it looks like that the amendment is to cover the carryover amount. Are we entertaining carryover amounts at the committee?
Madam Chair, the carryover request that's in the legislation for the amendment is in order. And yes, there was a, there was an exhibit that that needed to be edited. We thought that, I think that we thought it would need it to be edited, but I believe maybe Troy can speak to that. And that was to the unmet needs. Had some language. Mister, so can I get Troy to speak to that? Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair and Honorable Madam Chair along with the LOC committee members. Yes, I did have the opportunity to speak with the members of the Department of Justice during the recess. As when I received an additional document through email of a proposed amendment to exhibit E, it was the same exact exhibit that was originally dropped in the legislation. So we discussed that and at this point it was my understanding and agreement with them that there were no significant changes to any of the exhibits that all were in order. However, there was just a reassurance that the amendment for the carryover was also going to be entertained. And I believe that was discussed in the meeting as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Delegate Charles Newton.
Hold on. Thank you very much Troy for clarifying that. Yes, the, when we went to recess, the unmet need budget needed to be. We thought that the, that there was different numbers, but that is the same information that's in the budget there. So the unmet need, the forms didn't need to be changed out. So that just left to the conversation that was left of the carryover. And that was motion by Honorable Eugene So and second by Honorable James. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Okay, I guess I'm a little bit confused because I thought that before the recess, we were talking about unmet needs and that was the correction that needed to take place. The carryovers, I think, is something separate from the unmet needs. And I don't think we ever got a response back from Speaker regarding the unmet needs and how, how that's going to be entertained, I guess, during the budget process. And I say that because I don't know if any of the other divisions and departments that have come before Law and Order Committee, if they submitted a carryover request. I know that the unmet needs was submitted, but perhaps I can get a little bit more clarification in terms of the carryover and how that's going to be, I guess, how we're going to address that this year.
It's authority to recommend carryover. As you see that the legislation indicates, it's a recommendation from the Law and Order Committee to the Budget and Finance Committee in regarding to this legislation. So from there, Budget and Finance Committee will be able to expand on the carryover. But as committee, we do have the authority to recommend carryovers for programs. Then other than that, we have a motion on it and we have a second on that. And which is held by Honorable Eugene So. So with that, Troy, I'm going to turn some time over to you to expand on that on the, I guess, the, what I'm getting is that LOC's authority on carryovers approving and so forth. So if you could provide some information on that, Mr. Troy Cook, Office of Legislative Council. You have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair. Yes, that's correct. The language in the authority of the LOC at this point in time is it's only a recommendation to the Budget and Finance Committee where obviously they, once they receive the legislation, they will more or less reentertain that that issue on the carryover. At that point, upon the request of the Department of Justice, including mentioning it during the meeting of my notes, this amendment of the carryover was at that point then prepared by me today. So that's, that's what we're indicating right now. As the carryover is within the authority of the discussion and recommendation is within the authority of the Law and Order Committee.
Okay, thank you very much Troy. And Madam Chair, does that answer your question there pertaining to the amendment?
Yes, it does, Vice Chair. What my, what I'm concerned about is I just, you know, as a matter of being fair to all of the other divisions and departments that have already come before us, we didn't entertain carryovers, I don't believe, for any of the divisions and departments. And we didn't discuss it. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it was announced that we were awaiting the response from Speaker regarding the carryovers and whether that could be something or how that was going to be handled during this budget session, which is why the divisions and departments that have already come between us did not, you know, didn't present that information to this committee. Again, as just, you know, just to be fair, I think that we do need to call the division directors, all of them who have come before us already and ask them if they, if they were aware that carryovers could be requested and if they submitted that. Because this is the, I think this is the first one that we are actually considering at this point in terms of carryovers. I just, I just want to be fair to the, to the rest of the other divisions and departments because we've already voted on their budget. And I don't think, and I could be wrong on this, but I don't think we, we even entertained the, the idea of a carryover. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, we can really have a discussion. Maybe a, we could get Lorene to reach out to the division directors pertaining to the oversight and to see what your carryover needs are. And we can still entertain an amendment at, not we, but an amendment can be entertained at, but the next, the next oversight. And, and that's at Budget and Finance Committee. And that's where the others could be obtained if we wanted to move forward to create an equitable carryover. So that's my recommendation as, as the, as I'm chairing this meeting at this time. So that's what I'm going to bring forth unless if Honorable Eugene So withdraws his amendment to the carryover. No, it's to the, to the sponsoring individual who sponsored the amendment. So I'm going to go back. Madam Chair, you have any other follow up?
No, Vice Chair. I think if, if it is allowed and we can present that information to Budget and Finance, I'm okay with that. I just want to make clear that I don't, I do not believe that this committee allowed any of the other divisions and departments to submit carryover. Because again, we were awaiting instructions on how that was going to be handled. And I don't think Speaker ever got back to us on that. So maybe we could reach out to Chair Hanyo. I just want to make sure that we, that, that we do this correctly and that we also provide the other divisions and departments the opportunity to request their carryover, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And again, we'll go ahead and have staff reach out to the programs that we have approved their budgets for and get, get some information from them to figure out which program will require, want carryover. Now from there, we would have to get the legislation number and request for an amendment. And then that's where, I guess, we could get Troy to draft those carryover requests and get it ready for Budget and Finance Committee and make the changes there at BNF. That will be my recommendation, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair, you are chairing the meeting. So whatever recommendation you're providing, I'm okay. Again, I just want to make sure that the other divisions and departments have that opportunity to submit a request if they are asking for their carryover. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, any other questions relating to the amendment number one? Which a main motion is held by Honorable Eugene So and second emotion held by Honorable Vince James.
Another?
Honorable Eugene So, you have the floor.
I, I believe we had an amendment that we passed a few legislation back, 131-21, that also has an amendment of a carryover that we passed. We voted on. So this is just another legislation which is the same, by the same token. So we did pass one today. Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Eugene So, you are correct. I mean, 131 is the, that we passed the carryover and had the carryover language in the amendment. So this is the, will be the second legislation that going to have carryover language. So with that, any other questions pertaining to this legislation at Law and Order? Not hearing anything. And go once, twice, three times. Ms. Noto, can you go ahead and proceed with roll call, roll call, hold on, hold on, hold on. Lorene, can you go ahead and do the second reading? Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, just really quickly, did we vote on the amendment?
Oh, yes, okay, okay. There it is, okay. Well, Sherelle, excuse me, Sherelle, Ms. Noto, can you proceed with the roll call vote for amendment number one? Thank you.
Okay, Honorable Madam Chair Eugene Charles Newton, how do you vote?
I'll vote Green.
Honorable Charles Newton votes Green. Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
I vote Green.
Honorable Vince James votes Green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote is all fair.
Honorable Vince, Honorable Eugene So votes Green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Vice Chair Otto So, you have three in favor, zero opposed to not voting, which is including Honorable Vice Chair Otto So not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Amendment number one, with the main motion held by Honorable Eugene So and second emotion held by Honorable Vince James. Amendment number one has motion carries, three in favor, zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent. So we have this amendment, amendment number one passed. Moving on, committee members, is there any other discussion to this particular legislation 0152-21 at this time? Hearing anything, I'm going to go once, twice, three times. Lorene, can you go ahead and have a second reading of the changes to this legislation?
Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee. So going to page two, line 22, at section four as follows. Section four, recommending to the Budget Finance Committee carryovers for the Department of Justice. The Law and Order Committee recommends to carry over of unextended balances from novellation fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022 as follows. The Department of Justice unextended balances business unit 104001, 104002, and 104005. Thank you. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. You guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. I pressed something on my computer and it said muted. I muted myself and I'm speaking to myself here. So anyway, with the legislation, the second reading happening, then go ahead and move forth with the roll call vote on the. Noto, you're here to proceed with roll call vote on the.
Okay, Honorable Madam Chair Eugene Charles Newton, how do you vote?
Charles Newton votes Green.
Honorable Charles Newton votes Green. Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes Green.
Honorable Vince James votes Green. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote is all fair.
Honorable Eugene So votes Green. Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Vice Chair Otto So, you have three in favor, zero opposed to not voting, which is including Honorable Vice Chair Otto So not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Motion carries, main motion on legislation 0152-21. Motion carries, three in favor, zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting and Honorable Edmund Yasi absent. So with that, legislation moves forth to Budget Finance Committee. With that, item on the agenda is legislation 0153-21. And that legislation is pertaining to. Let me make sure I have, I have that information correct before I. That legislation is pertaining to the Law and Order Committee approving and recommending Budget, Budget Finance Committee relating to hearing and appeal. So with that, Lorene, can you read the legislation into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee members. Tracking number 0153-21, an action related to Law and Order Committee approving and recommending to the Budget Finance Committee that proposed fiscal year 2022 budget for the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals. In Act X, Section One, Authority, A, the Law and Order Committee is a standing committee of Novellation Council. Two, NNC, Section 600A. B, the Law and Order Committee is the Oversight Committee for the Novellation Office of Appeals. Two, NNC, Section 601C1. Each Oversight Committee shall review and make recommendations to the Budget Finance Committee concerning the budget in accordance with the annual budget instruction. 12, NNC, Section 840A. Section 220A, the Law and Order Committee held a budget hearing and took budget testimony regarding the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals. Fiscal year 2022 budget, 12, NNC, Section 840A. B, the Law and Order Committee recommends to the Budget Finance Committee a fiscal year budget for the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals. 12, NNC, Section 840A. Section three, approving and recommending to the Budget Finance Committee that proposed fiscal year 2022 budget for the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals. A, the Law and Order Committee hereby acknowledges the proposed novellation fiscal year FY 2022 budget for the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals recommended by the Novellation Office of the President and Vice President as provided on the Fund Type Men, Type Budget Summary attached Exhibit A. B, the Law and Order Committee requests that the Budget Finance Committee and the Novellation Council adopt the changes to the budget as set forth in the General Fund Compared, Compared to Summary Exhibit B and recommend the changes to the General Fund Budget. Exhibit C, recommended conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns. Exhibit D, and recommended amendment needs. Exhibit E, C, the Law and Order Committee authorizes the committee chairperson or vice chairperson to meet and negotiate with the Budget Finance Committee on these recommendations. Attached are the exhibits, A, Exhibit A, Fund Type Budget Summary. Exhibit B, General Fund Compared to Summary. Exhibit C is the recommended changes to the General Fund Budget. Exhibit D is the recommended conditions of appropriation and legislative concern. Exhibit E is the recommended unmet needs budget. And it's gone through the five day comment process. More comments received. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, going to call for a motion? Community members?
I look at James' motion.
Motion by Honorable Vince James and then call for a second in motion.
Okay, see another?
Thank you, Cat, Honorable Eugene So. With that, we have a motion in place, second in place. Before I turn it over to the sponsor, we did, committee members, we did get an email from Office of Legislative Council that there's an amendment for, for this particular legislation. So the document had been sent to the committee and most likely we would need to entertain an amendment for that, for, for this program. So with that, Honorable Chairwoman, Eugenia Charles Newton, you can go ahead and proceed forward with your presentation and your, and with your, along with your agent on the line. You can call upon them when, when you need them to speak. You have the floor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Honorable Otto So. Law and Order Committee members, Office of Hearing and Appeals did come before the committee on August 9th, 2021. At that time, they did present to us their budgets. They also discussed their unmet needs. And they shared with us the, the, the purpose of requesting for unmet needs. And also there was some discussion about equipment needing to be replaced. At this time, I am going to hand the floor over to the Director, Mr. Richie Nas, as my agent, who may clarify a little bit more as to the changes that have been requested through the Office of Legislative Council. Mr. Nas, are you on the line?
I am, madam. So to the Honorable Law and Order Committee and to the Honorable Counsel delegates, Office of Hearings and Appeals have proposed an amendment to exhibit E, which is the recommended unmet needs to the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget. Under business unit 103004, we are requesting $45,416 for information system technology position that includes fringe benefits and workman's comp. This position will assist with the technical systems within OX. We have had multiple visits from the, the computer.
DIT.
DIT section, thank you. And, and, and they say, do not, do not put any more information on your computers because it's, it's ready to fail. And so we will be, this person will not only keep up with the systems, but will continue to maintain and install them. We've all, we're also asking for $80,000, which will be to purchase and get legal files to have access to cases between the legal staff and the office to better serve the clients. To the Honorable Counsel delegates, the judicial branch have a similar system that will, that keeps track of their cases in the family courts and district courts and the Supreme Court level as well. I think they, it also tracks cases in the peacemaking section. We don't have such a system and everything is manual. So we have asked for price quotes before and this is the price that they've given us. The next line item, we're asking for $2,2500, which is to purchase LexisNexis as a legal research tool for the hearing officers to use in writing orders for cases. LexisNexis is similar to, but much cheaper than Westlaw in helping us to research Indian, Native American cases throughout the United States and throughout tribal courts in the United States, which might reflect on some of the cases that, that we hear here at this office. And so we will be, we would like to purchase them. The next item is that $1,000, which is a subscription to Zoom meetings that will allow all participants to call in for hearings for groups that are, that have at least 20 or more individuals. Right now, we have a Zoom system that only allows two telephone calls. And so we're advising the attorneys to connect with their clients on their telephones and just have a call in from the initiating parties council as well as the aggrieved employees council for personnel cases. There are other respondents and petitioners and other non-employee related cases. And we're telling them the same information. We could, our, our phone system for, for Zoom only handles two telephone calls. And the last item, we're asking for $10,000, which is for the hearing room upgrade. Get partitions installed includes plexiglass for hearing tables and reception area. We have a hearing room, but there is no, we cannot comply with the CDC requirements. Thankfully, the, the labor. Thankfully, the, the Labor Commission have a room that is outfitted with Plexiglas. And an issue came up, for example, just this week, that one of the parties representing the, the Department of Justice that is representing the, the nation in a, an employee dispute wants to play a video clip of, of the incident in question. And they, they note that we don't, our hearing room is deficient, is not prepared. So we are asking for use of the Labor Commission's hearing room that is fully outfitted with Plexiglas. However, we do not have, neither do they, a video system that will allow the parties to hear, to hear and see the video clip. So all these are upgrades that need to be done. So respectfully, Honorable Delegates Ashonda, we, we, we need your favorable consideration in the amendment to Exhibit E.
Okay, thank you very much. With your presentation, Mr. Richie Nez. Madam Chair, does that complete your?
Vice Chair, Honorable Otto, so yes, that does complete your presentation at this time, and we do stand for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go, before I move to the floor, we have a motion in place, second in place. The main motion, committee members, an amendment is required for this particular, for, for this program. And therefore, it is prepared, is emailed to us, and would this consider one of the committee members to entertain the amendment? And with that, with that, move to the floor, and ask committee members, any questions pertaining to this legislation?
Honorable Vice Chair, if I can interject, please.
Oh, she, before I, before I call on the committee member, Sir Troy Cook, Office of Legislative Services, Legislative Council.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just for your information, the amendment that I sent regarding replacement of the exhibits, it was my initial impression from Office of Legislative Services that all the exhibits needed to be replaced with new ones. However, from my understanding of Mr. Nez, all that's required is Exhibit E, which is the unmet needs exhibit needs to be replaced. So what I can do right now as I'm speaking, I'm redrafting that amendment, and I can send it to you all within the next three to five minutes.
Okay, that'll, that'll, that'll be fine.
Okay, standby, please. Thank you, Vice Chair.
To read that into the record. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go ahead and call a recess for 10 minutes. Give you guys ample time to finish that up, and we'll have it ready. We'll reconvene at 12:52 PM. Recession.
No, there, Honorable Jean.
Oh, that's nice.
He didn't get offended, so I guess that's good.
Jerel. Eugene So.
Okay, thank you very much, 11:52. So it was a 10-minute recess. And go ahead and go back, call this research, call the meeting back to order. And it is now 10:00 or 12:52. And can I get a real call vote provided by this note? Thank you. Jerel, can you provide?
Vice Chair. This is Lorraine, I can do the real call.
Okay, Lorraine, go ahead.
Real call for Law and Order Committee, Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Rich James.
Delegate James, present.
Honorable Eugene So. Honorable Edmund Yazi. Honorable Otto So.
I am present.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton is present.
Honorable Eugene So.
Lorraine, did you, did you get me?
Yes, I did. Mr. Vice Chair, we have three members present. Mr. Honorable Edmund Yazi didn't answer, absent. And Honorable Eugene So did not answer the real call. Three members present, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. We have a call. We have a motion in place, a second in place for a, for the amendment. And with that, could I get a? Okay, Troy did speak about the amendment there. So the committee members, there is a required amendment for this legislation. We have two documents. One was the, the document that Troy just sent out to us pertaining to the replacement of the Exhibit E with a new, replace Exhibit E with the new replacement to new E. And then earlier, he sent out a carryover section of the amendment for 0153-21. So committee members, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, and you have the floor. Committee members, is there any questions to the legislation or anyone gonna make an action to amend, to entertain the amendment number one?
Motion to make the amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. Amendment number one, motion by Honorable Vince James. And the call for second emotion.
By Charles Newton.
Second by Honorable Charles, Madam Chair, Eugenia Charles Newton. With that, can I get staff to read into the record of the amendment of this, to this legislation? Troy set out not too long ago, and Troy had the carryover section of, of that also read into the record. Lorraine?
And Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee members, going to the First Amendment, replacing Exhibit E. And we, the new replacement for a new Exhibit E is attached. And then going to the other one is page two, line 22, at section four as follows. Section four, recommending to the Budget Finance Committee careovers for the Office of Hearings and Appeals. A, Law and Order Committee recommends the carryover of all unextended balances for the Novellation Office of Hearings and Appeals. Business Unit 103004. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. The amendment number one has been let it read into the record. With that, committee members, is there any questions to amendment number one at this time? Go once, twice, three times, don't hear anything, move forth with real call vote, staff of Law and Order Committee.
Okay. Real call vote, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, how do you vote?
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Rich James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yazi, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Mr. Vice Chair, you have two in favor, zero opposed, and three not voting, which includes the Chair, the Vice Chair not voting.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, amendment number one carries two in favor, zero opposed, and Vice Chair not voting, and Edmund Yazi absent. And then Eugene So, he was on the line, I'm saying not voting this time. With that, moving on, committee members, is there any other discussions to Legislation 0153-21? Not hearing anything, I'm gonna go once, go twice, and three times. Lorraine, can you go ahead and proceed with real call, or proceed with the second reading? Uh, Lorraine, can you go ahead and proceed with real call or proceed with the, uh, second reading?
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair. The amendment is to swap out Exhibit E and replace it with a new Exhibit E. And then, um, replace. Hold on. Okay. The other one is, um, page two, line twenty-two at section four as follows. Section four recommending to the Budget Finance Committee care overs for the office of hearings and appeals. A law and order committee recommends to the care over of all, all of the unextended balances for the Navajo Office of Hearings and Appeals Business Unit one zero three zero zero four. Mr. Vice Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we're reading that, uh, in, second reading to the record and, uh, go ahead and proceed with real call votes.
Okay, real call vote, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, how do you vote?
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Okay.
Honorable Edwin Yasi, how do you vote? Honorable Rich James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Okay, with a vote of three in favor, two opposed, which includes the Chairperson, Vice Chairperson and Honorable, um, Edwin Yasi not voting. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Motion carries, three in favor, zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting and Honorable Edwin Yasi.
Are you getting my vote?
Yes, uh.
Delegate James.
Honorable James, we got your vote. You hear me?
Okay, thank you.
So, eh, they, uh, so motion carries and, uh, moves forth to Budget and Finance Committee. And, uh, with that, uh, gonna go on to the next item on the agenda there, uh, close of meeting. Close of the special meeting. Um, any announcement to the committee members at this time?
Vice Chair, this is Delegate Charles Newton. I do have, uh, just a reminder for our committee members, if you'll allow me the opportunity.
Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, committee members, just as a reminder, we are finishing up with our Law and Order Committee budget. Once these legislation, or actually we have passed all the legislations, none of the legislations have been tabled, so they are proceeding forward to budget and finance. Again, as I stated yesterday on the record, um, I did email, uh, Chair Henio and Vice Chair Raymond Smith as well as Peggy, asking them that Law and Order Committee not be scheduled the nineteenth, the twentieth and the twenty-first. The reasons for that is because we have the DOJ litigation update and the Law and Order Committee had requested that litigation update uh, so that we have some information, uh, that may or that might pertain to the revamping of Title seventeen and Title fourteen as well. So, uh, it is important as committee members that we be present during that litigation update. On the twenty-first, as a reminder, committee members, we have been invited to Pueblo Pantado. Um, this is in the Eastern Agency. They're asking that we come out on a Saturday to meet with the community members to discuss public safety. Uh, so we will be, uh, this request is still tentative, uh, so we're, I'm hoping to get more solid information here within the next couple of days. Uh, so right now we're looking at budget and finance, the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth. Uh, during that time, um, Vice Chair, I will need your assistance on the twenty-third, uh, cause we do have a regular scheduled Law and Order Committee meeting. If I am called at budget and finance to present this information, um, I'd like to ask for your assistance during that time. In addition to that, committee members, in terms of the budget, Navajo Nation, uh, well, the budget, Navi Kiyetska, is set for September third, which is the Friday right before Labor Day. And then Navajo Nation Council will be entertaining the budget the week of September seventh through the tenth. Again, all of this information is located in the BIM booklet, uh, but I am, uh, informing the committee members of this as we go through the budget process. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you very much for that, uh, information, uh, Jananda. Though I did, um, the, uh, budget hearing pertaining to, um, Budget Finance Committee and, uh, yes, we have a litigation update in Albuquerque with Department of Justice, so it, uh, I don't, uh, yes, I will be, uh, available for that meeting that, um, if that, if you, that, that day should, um, you need to present the budget, I can convene the Law and Order Committee, the regular scheduled Law and Order Committee meeting. So, eh, yeah, with that, Jananda, is there any other questions or, uh, announcement, announcements, uh, at this time? Committee members? Not hearing any? Go once.
I have a, I have a question.
Uh, Vince James, you have the floor.
Uh, yeah, that's, now let, um, protect, Vice Chair.
Yes, uh, Honorable James, you have the floor. Honorable James, can you hear me? Or can, uh, can, can staff hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
We can hear you, Vice Chair.
Okay. Um, can you hear me now? Hello? Hello, um.
We can hear you.
During the Division of Public Safety, I got disconnected. So did we resolve the issue for Division of Public Safety? If not, can we go back to Division of Public Safety? Yeah, thanks.
Honorable James, the Division of Public Safety legislation, according to my notes here, uh, as we, uh, talk, was, let's, as legislation number, um, hold on, let me, let me get this one here. One thirty-one, that's Labor Commission. Uh, one thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-four, Public Safety. Uh, I show that, uh, that's probably the time that you, you gotta, you, you, either you got off the air and things like that, but Public Safety, we want to entertain an, an amendment. And, uh, a second in emotion was not, was not met. Uh, the amendment to change and make those changes, uh, uh, did not occur because there was no second emotion. And, uh, it was, uh, I don't, I, I went around second time to ask, uh, committee members for, for, uh, amendment again. And then there's no amendment again for the second round. So I went ahead and moved forth to the main motion to, uh, move the legislation forth. And the legislation was, um, was moved at a vote of two in favor, zero opposed and, uh, Vice Chair not voting. And that's what I have on my, on my record here. It did, what, uh, uh, what could happen is that, um, as this budget gets to BNF, uh, those changes there, um, that amendment would probably have to be entertained at Budget and Finance Committee so that those documents that we asked to be, that, those would be inserted at the time pertaining to what you were requesting for. Jananda.
Okay, thank you.
All righty then, thank you very much. With that, uh, you don't hear anything else, uh, I'm gonna move forth for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Delegate James.
Honorable Rich.
Second by Charles Newton.
And Honorable Gina Charles Newton to second the motion. With that, uh, uh, staff, go ahead and move forth with real call vote for motion to adjourn.
Okay, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, how do you vote?
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Rich James, how do you vote?
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Okay, okay.
Honorable Edwin Yasi, how do you vote? Mr. Vice Chair, with a vote of three in favor, zero opposed and two not voting, which is, um, including yourself and Edwin Yasi, who is absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn was, motion to adjourn carries at one oh nine PM. With that, uh, thank you very much, committee members for, uh, being on the line and those of you, uh, entities that are under line travel programs and Navajo Nation Legislative Branch staff and Office Legislative Council, yeah, and the Office of Legislative Services, thank you for being on the line. Uh, Budget Finance Committee. Be safe out there.
Thank you all, goodbye.
What happened to the car, y'all?
Thank you, everybody, be safe.